Welcome to the May 30th, 2018, meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, you can do so on your phone, or you can borrow computers from Ms. Chides, who is right there. I'd like to remind everyone that we're broadcasting our meeting live on YouTube, and to the thousands who are watching us over the radio on 89.3 FM and on TV on Comcast Cable, Channel 33. This means that our meetings and anything captured on video will be archived online, and will be online forever. I will now call the open session of tonight's meeting to order. We've moved clocks. Now their clocks there, clocks there. So call it 7:35, we began closed session at 5:30. Ms. Chides, please share with the community members present our process for translation of the meeting.
Buenas noches, y bienvenidos si hay alguien que necesita traducción de inglés al español porque desea dirigirse a la Mesa Directiva durante tus comentarios, por favor de hacérmelo saber, ya que le agregaremos más segundos al reloj durante su comentario. Muchas gracias. Director Karen Hemphill?
Here.
Director Uma Nava-Rajan Swenson?
Here.
Director Leva Cutler?
Present.
Director Ty Alper?
Present.
Vice President Judy Appel?
Here.
President Josh Daniels?
Here. So now we're on to approving the agenda. Are there any requested changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Director Hemphill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Alper, without objection. It is approved. Now reporting out of closed session, was not as packed as last week, but nonetheless it was busy. All right, item 3.1, request for record expungement. Motion by Alper, second by Leva Cutler, and a vote of four to zero to one, with Vice President Appel abstaining. The Board voted to approve the staff recommendation to deny the request for record expungement. Make sure to write that down. Item number 3.2.1, public employee discipline dismissal release, employee ID number 12037. Motion by Director Alper, second by Director Hemphill, with a vote of four to zero, Vice President Appel being absent, the Board approved the staff recommendation to dismiss a classified employee. Item number 3.3.1, superintendent, public employment, we discussed this item. Item 3.4, 3.5, and 3.6, these are negotiations with respect to BCC, BFT, and Local 21 respectively. We discussed those items as a Board, and superintendent's valuation, item 3.7, the Board also discussed. Providing an overview of tonight's meeting. So we have two very important items to cover tonight. The first being an update on special education. As a district, this is one of our top three priorities, excuse me, as a Board, this is one of our top three priorities for the 2018 calendar year, and when we reflected on the first three months of our meetings, we had done a pretty good job of focusing on our priorities, but special ed had not been a huge amount of time spent by this Board on that topic. So this is the second update that we will be receiving in this first half of the year, and there's a lot of history that goes with it that will be covered, at least in part, as part of that item. And then after our amazing trivia question, we will have an update on the May revise, and I know it might sound sort of bureaucratic in nature, but it is a vitally important thing where the Governor proposes the budget for next year, and it has deep implications for how we as a Board and as a district will focus our activities and our priorities, not only for the remainder of this calendar year, but also for 18, 19, 19, 20, and beyond. So as always, I'm sure you have work in the morning, kids to put to sleep, but if you are able, please stay, and if you cannot, we want to encourage you to listen online or on the radio. It is, this is local democracy at work, and we need your presence and observation to make it, to make it possible.
It just makes us feel really good when there's people here.
And it makes us feel really good to know that you're watching. And before we get to public comment, as always, we are going to do the trivia question for this evening. So for those of you who have been here before, and to the thousands who are watching, we do a trivia question every Board meeting to educate and engage the public. We solicit answers to the trivia question around 9:30, give or take. The winners, if you get it right, you get some BUSD schwag, and we, the first sort of opportunity to respond accurately goes to members of the audience, so want to encourage you to stay here for that. And then after that, we go to email responses. The email address is trivia@berkeley.net. You can email in your responses that way. And then after that, we go to the Twitter sphere, and see if we have any correct responses on Twitter. Next, please. So, under sort of California education, sort of data keeping, there are eight major racial and ethnic categories that each student is a part of, or can be a part of. So African-American, American Indian, Alaska Native, which that's the same one, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, Filipino, Pacific Islander, white, or then two or more races if you've checked more than one. So just to be clear, these are the actual way that it's phrased in the data system. So that's just how it's written, so it wasn't something that we created, this is how it's written. Next slide, please. Okay. So there is a nonprofit called EdData that's a collection of different entities, and they put out, they're one of the places that put out sort of data on student demographics, test scores, other student outcomes, information you might be interested in around a school or school district. And so they create what's called an Ethnic Diversity Index. Next, please. And so what this index does is it measures the, how much variance there is within the racial, ethnic composition of a student body. So it's between a score of zero and 100, so if it's zero, that means everyone's the same, like everyone is Asian, or everyone is two or more races. And if it's 100, that means that the school is evenly divided between all eight different groups, so one-eighth each. So it's basically a measure of, of sort of variance, measure of, sometimes it's used for measure of segregation, depending, you know, if it's all one race. So, so that's sort of the frame for this question. Next, next, please. Okay. So only clear that this measure is indifferent to the specific race or ethnicity, right? So that means it's not a measure of non-white students. So 100 does not mean you have 100% non-white students. That's not what it means. It simply means 100 or zero means you have either a lot of diversity, or, or no diversity. Diversity not being a code word for non-white, which sometimes it's used for, but that's not what we're talking about here. So currently, the highest Ethnic Diversity Index for a school in California is 76. Okay? So, the question for the day is, what is the BUSD school with the highest Ethnic Diversity Index? Okay? Now, there's extra credit, because we did it last time, and it seemed kind of fun. So what is the Ethnic Diversity Index for BUSD over, what's the number between 0 and 100? For context, Oakland's Ethnic Diversity Index is 55, and West Contra Costa's Ethnic Diversity Index is 49. So again, the first, the main question to get your schwag is, what is the BUSD school with the highest Ethnic Diversity Index? And then if you really want to be superstar, what is the Ethnic Diversity Index for BUSD? And there are right, there are written versions of this on the back table, if you want to think about it over time. So hopefully you are now intrigued, and you will all stay here till 9:30 to get the answer. All right. And this one, since it doesn't involve intimate knowledge of BUSD, is open to BUSD staff. All right. So the next item on the agenda is 30 minutes of public comment. For tonight, each speaker will be given three minutes. Ms. Chides has already explained the process for public comment. We also end the meeting with another opportunity for public comment, so if you do not get a chance to speak during this particular period, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. To keep things moving, I'd like to ask the speaker who's next in line, come forward and wait in the lectern, sort of against that wall, near that picture over there, and I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Please note that the Board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes, and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. Following the public comment period, there is a time on the agenda during which Board members and the superintendent have a few meeting, a few minutes each, to make a comment about whatever we want. That is a time in which Board members can choose to respond to something said in public comment, or may make any other comment. We have found that this process keeps our meeting running smoothly, allows for maximum amount of people to speak during the 30 minutes allotted for public comment, and it ensures compliance with the Brown Act, which does not allow for Board discussions about items not placed on the meeting agenda. Lastly, I want to remind all speakers that there are children in the audience, they may be listening or watching online, or at home, so please keep that in mind as you speak. Also, if you have complaints about specific district employees, we encourage you to take advantage of our formal complaint proceed, process, rather than using public comment for that purpose. And again, please remember that anything you say is being broadcast live, and will be archived online forever. All right. So Kate Ledger, followed by, I think it's Dagny Dingman.
Hello, I'm Kate Ledger, and I'm a resident of Berkeley, and my daughter just graduated from Berkeley High last year, so she's gone through the whole school district. And I'm talking about the Sustainability Plan, and I just wanted to say first, thank you guys very much for supporting the development of the Sustainability Plan, I think is really important for the city and for the state, the country. Second, I'm really glad that there's going to be an eco-literacy component. I think it's really essential for developing a sense of empowerment in our children. There are, the solutions to our various environmental crises exist, there actually, there's so many solutions, and it feels like there aren't. It feels like we're powerless to solve so many of these crises. But our children understand the seriousness of the challenge. They understand the issues of climate change, pollution, species extinction, species extinction. They're, they're like sponges, even if we don't talk about it, they know it's there, and they, you know, it's kind of like asking them, you know, telling them, well, you know, just change out your light bulbs. It's, they, we really need to provide them with education about solutions in our, in the school curriculum. I think it's, it's just not fair to not give them those tools to address the problems. So I'm really glad that there's going to be an eco-literacy component to the Sustainability Plan, and I think it's going to really help to create leaders, and positive and engaged adults. The third thing I wanted to say is that as part of this Sustainability Plan, I think we really need to have a strong policy for green building materials, green cleaning supplies, and indoor air quality. We have this sense that our government is protecting us from the worst of environmental harms, from the worst of pollutants and chemicals, but it's really just not the case. I moved to California to go to graduate school for architecture, and before that, I worked on Capitol Hill overseeing EPA's implementation of water quality and other environmental programs. And then, and throughout my whole professional life as an architect, I have seen over and over again that we are not being protected by our government, and it's really falls to us to protect our children. And so to do that, we really need to have a strong policy within this sustainable, Sustainability Plan for green building materials, green cleaning supplies, and indoor air quality. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dagny Dingman, followed by Carrie Dahlgren.
Good evening. My name is Dagny Dingman, and I have proudly worked at Berkeley High School for the past 10 years. I have taught English at every grade level, and have held a variety of leadership roles. I have loved my job these past 10 years because of the amazing students I get to teach, and the amazing colleagues I get to work with. Over the years, I have had the extreme luck to work with students in many different parts of the school, and I have been blown away by how thoughtful, smart, funny, and inspiring our students at BHSR. In addition, my role at BHS over the years has led me to work closely with teachers and staff in all parts of the school. Our staff is truly the best anywhere. Everyone in this district works more than full-time, ensuring that our students are always put first. In Berkeley, we are constantly having the hard conversations, and I have always looked forward to coming to work and having those conversations with my colleagues, so that we can ensure that BHS works better for all students. However, this will be my last year at Berkeley, a fact that makes me very sad. While my decision to leave Berkeley High School is complicated, and involves lots of factors, that have to do with my family, the final calculation was a financial calculation. Next year, I will be working in a district that simply pays teachers significantly more than our district. With two kids at home, the astronomical cost of childcare and housing, and a partner who's taking on extra work to make ends meet, I felt like I had to make this move for my family. I feel a tremendous amount of loss leaving the community that I love and believe in. And given different circumstances, I would strongly consider returning to this district. I hope that my brilliant, hard-working colleagues can experience a wage increase soon that will prevent them from making the same difficult decision to leave, because I know that that is bad for our students. Thank you for your time.
Carrie Dahlgren, followed by Jeff Jew.
Hi, I'm Carrie Dahlgren, and I'm the parent of a Longfellow 7th grader. We have had a great experience at Longfellow. My child has benefited from the amazing music program, and the jazz band, and the choir. They've found an amazing and supportive group of both friends and an engaged community of teachers. We've had a great experience, but Longfellow also has many needs, and we really appreciate the fact that BUSD School Board and the direct, and the district administration are looking more closely at the challenges that Longfellow is facing, and we just want to outline again for you some of those tonight. We would like to implement additional math support classes for students who have been assessed as far below basic proficiency. This would be in addition to the current math support for our students who are assessed at basic or approaching proficient standards. Our school's team also has an exciting program for early back-to-school programs in math, literacy, and avid strategies. Some of our Longfellow teachers have already developed curricula for this program, and are interested in implementing it this summer. This would give our students a boost back up from the summer slide, and be ready to move forward on day one of a new school year. We would also like to provide an English language arts support for our 7th graders. We have already maximized the use of our current funding to create new English language arts support class in 6th and 8th grades, and additional funds would allow us to provide support at each grade level. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Jew, followed by Susan Silber.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Jew. I'm a Berkeley High alum, and head coach, boys tennis coach at Berkeley High, and also a committee member of Friends of Berkeley High Tennis. First, I want to thank everybody for approving that project at King Middle School, so I commend you for that. But the history of Berkeley High Tennis kind of goes way back to 1950, when the courts at Berkeley High were built, and, and in 2001, they, it was converted into a parking lot. So we thought it was going to be temporary, but it's been 17 years. So we hope you didn't forget that it's temporary, and we can bring tennis courts back at Berkeley High. So it's, it's really important because to give all, all the students at Berkeley High an opportunity to learn a lifetime sport, also our teams at Berkeley High, the girls' and boys' teams. We're the only school in our league that, that doesn't have courts on or close to the campus, so our, our students lose valuable class time, and even the home matches, or away matches. But, so please, we need to keep working hard to bring courts back to Berkeley High, so thank you.
Thank you. Susan Silber, followed by Zabed Monica.
Good evening. Almost exactly a year ago, I spoke before you during public comment, and urged you to take action on sustainability and climate change. The School Board more than delivered on this request, so thank you so much for approving my contract in November to write a long-range Sustainability Plan that integrates both facilities and curriculum, and I'll be asking you to look at that and vote on it in the fall. I'm here to provide some updates about writing the plan, as we've been making a lot of progress. I've been working under the supervision of first Tim White, and now Steve Collins, we've made, we've been meeting weekly. Our working group has been meeting diligently, and includes parents, teachers, community members, BUSD employees, and groups like the Lawrence Hall of Science. I've also met with close to 10 classes and hundreds of students, as most of the Berkeley Unified managers. And thank you so much, Beatrice Leva-Cutler, for your attendance at the, at the kickoff meeting. And thank you Superintendent Evans for taking the time to meet with me on the 20th, and I would love to send that invitation to the Deputy, Deputy Superintendents and the School Board as well, to attend that meeting. We sent out a survey to the BUSD community, and received close to 500 responses. I want to note that from the, that from that survey, only, almost 90% of those surveys think that it's urgent to teach students about environmental education and stewardship. And from those surveys, close to 75% thought that the district was not supporting environmental literacy and sustainability enough. It's time to change that. Our priorities include waste reduction. Many classrooms don't even have a system for even bottles and cans recycling, or classroom composting. We throw out thousands of plastic utensils every day. We did receive a $15,000 grant already to buy composting and recycling bins, and work with schools to improve their systems. We also want to look at the NGSS and other state standards. So many teachers want to know how to integrate environmental topics into their curriculum. We want to have that opportunity to provide professional development to support that request. And we want to make the switch finally to green cleaning products, because some of these products being used to clean these classrooms and schools are literally making our students sick. To conclude, climate change has been said time and time again to be one of the most urgent issues humanity's ever faced. Lower-income families and neighborhoods are also often the first communities affected by climate change and pollution, including in Berkeley. I'm excited to be working on a plan that shows that Berkeley Unified is committing, committed to implementing environmental solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Zabed Monica, followed by Hans Abramson-Ward.
Hi, I'm Zabed, and I've been teaching science at Willard Middle School for five years. Every day, I get a chance to work with young, curious, and creative students. I help them hone their natural curiosity, build confidence, skills, and tenacity, so that one day soon, they will help solve, tackle problems that our generation has failed to. I cherish the diversity and generosity I see in my classroom and community every day, and I feel blessed to be a Berkeley teacher. Currently, my family rents a house just five blocks from school. I invest the time I save in my short commute into extralession planning, including designing activities that all my students can access and learn from, and providing after-school support. Last year, our rent increased by $1,000 a month. We live in fear of another $1,000 increase, or the house being sold out from under us. We've been working with a nonprofit housing agency for over a year, but even if they can help us, the nearest places we can afford to live, to buy, are 20 miles away. Every month, I watch the distance increase, making my ability to remain a Berkeley teacher less and less secure. Growing up as a poor brown boy in the housing projects in England, I found my school provided a safe nurturing space. My 4th grade teacher Valerie Lent changed my life, giving me the confidence to embrace my differences and to push. Since I struggled in middle school, I wanted to be the kind of teacher for 7th graders that Valerie was for me. I've been making a difference for our kids, and I want to keep on making a difference. I'm here asking for your help, so that I continue to do so. Thank you.
Hans Abramson-Ward, followed by Lori Nixon.
I am a parent of three students at BUSD. I've got a, a boy at Berkeley High, a boy at Longfellow, and a boy at Thousand Oaks, and I'm here to talk about Longfellow. First of all, I'd like to reiterate that we love our school. It's a great community. As, as these kids go through middle school, it's a challenging time of life for them. They're going through a lot of changes, and they're confused, and Longfellow has built a tight-knit community of, of kids who support each other, and, and adults who support them, and it's been fantastic for my two kids, who've experienced it so far. There's amazing teachers, there are amazing counseling staff there. But these amazing teachers and the amazing counselors are, are facing some real challenges because of the high concentration of students that have high needs at Longfellow. Let's see, our district's LCAP plan spells out how the, how the district will support low-income students, foster youth, and English learners. Within Berkeley, about 35 to 40% of the students fall into these categories, but at Longfellow, it's 59%. These high, this high concentration of needs among the student population really, really requires a high concentration of funding, and you, the Board, and the district administration has the ability to provide that. We understand you've received over 100 letters today with specific plans for how this funding can be used, and actions that could be taken to, to directly benefit the experience of students at Longfellow. And I'd like to just express my support for that plan. This four-point plan, real briefly, are four specific asks. One is to allow the incoming students to hit the ground running, so that we can identify the students that, that need special supports in English language arts early. The second is to implement additional math support for the students who have been assessed as far below basic proficiency. The third is to implement a, a plan that many of the teachers at Longfellow have already put together to allow early start, to, to allow them to start early to work with the incoming students for next year. And then the fourth would be to provide a special English language arts class for the 7th graders, because we at Longfellow...
Finish your thought. Finish your sentence, yeah.
We, we at Longfellow have already directed our general funds to providing similar supports for the 6th and 8th graders.
Thank you. Thank you. Lori Nixon, followed by Chloe Smith.
My name's Lori Nixon. I am a proud member of the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees. I serve on the EM/BAAM Caucus for the California Federation of Teachers. So I came tonight to be an observing member, and I read the agenda, and I got a pit in my stomach when I saw item 12.2, which is a recommendation from the superintendent to give a one-time 1% bonus to the executive council. Now, that's four people splitting $10,000. And some people might say, oh, it's only $10,000, but that $10,000 should be in the hands of the people who have their boots on the ground every single day. Slipping it in on this consent calendar, that normally just gets voted in one motion, is really shady. It's shady. It builds, it's the... It's the reason why there is this distress between the admin and the rest of the people who make this district run. Now, somebody who makes like... Go to Transparent California if you're listening here right now. The superintendent made $297,000 in 2016. The associate superintendent of Business Services, $179,000. Associate superintendent of Human Resources, $188,000. Associate superintendent of Education Services, $212,000. Now, I know that no teacher in this district is close to that. No classified staff member is close to that. Maybe the higher upper management, you know, who work on the second or third floor. But the people who are in our schools, cleaning the bathrooms, cleaning the classrooms, prepping the food every day, are not making this. And to say that you guys are worth getting $2,300 is ludicrous. It's completely bogus. Now, I got my bonus last week, the one-time 1% bonus, and it is not enough, like I told you last week. And everybody's been telling you. You have teachers here crying because they can't stay and be here, and you're going to vote to give yourself a raise right now? I can't... I'm really blown away. I'm really shocked. So I want the board to please rethink just sweeping 12.2 through. Give the people of this district the fair, you know, discussion that we all deserve and continue these negotiations with these three unions you have going on with the best intention in mind to give us the raises that we all deserve. Thank you.
Chloe Smith, followed by Leanna Lewis.
My name's Chloe Smith. I teach seventh grade English at Willard Middle School. I've been there for four years, and I've been a full-time teacher for six years. I'm also a child of Berkeley. I grew up here, and I feel an intense loyalty to our community. Although I didn't attend Berkeley schools, many of the friends of my youth are products of BUSD. The foundation that Berkeley Schools laid allowed them to go on to successful careers. They're now scientists, doctors, engineers, and programmers. I consider myself their peer in the complex problems I embrace in my work, in the service I provide to my community, and in the intellectual rigor of my job. I love teaching, and I give it my all. It gets me up early, and it follows me home at night and on the weekends. I relish the constant, the creative conundrums of planning. How do I make this idea, this text, accessible? Being a teacher is to be in a constant state of learning. And being an English teacher is a special privilege since my students share so much of themselves with me in their writing. I spend hours each week reviewing students' work, finding ways to push confident students to further stretch themselves, and remind struggling students of the immense values of their efforts. Figuring out how to best understand my students' diverse needs, how to rise time and time again to the challenge of knowing and reaching 120 12- and 13-year-olds every single day, is difficult, fulfilling, professional work. I'm my friend's peer in everything but income. I'm 34 years old, and my friends are buying houses and starting families. I'm 34 years old, and I live with my parents. There's no other way for me to continue to live and work in Berkeley as a teacher. I love my job. I'm good at it, and I believe in it. I want to continue to educate the children of Berkeley. I want them to get the same strong education my friends got so they can grow up to find successful, profitable, intellectually challenging jobs, maybe even right here in our community. I hope that teaching can be one of those jobs, but right now, I'm afraid it may not be.
Leanna Lewis, followed by Angela Coppola.
Good evening. My name's Leanna Lewis, and I'm a sixth grader at Longfellow Middle School. In the short time that we've been at Longfellow, I've had the wonderful opportunity and benefit to really get to know and work closely with the teachers and staff, many of the students and their caregivers. As you've heard continuously tonight, it really is a small, tight-knit community, and we do care deeply about each other as we are fully aware and understand that our successes are tied one to another. We see ourselves in this with our students and with our families together, really on the same path and really striving towards making sure every student and every youth at our school has a full opportunity to be successful as they move forward. So I'm happy and really proud to also be part of a Berkeley community that's equally committed to ensuring that all students have equitable access and opportunity for academic success. As you've heard many times tonight, we are happy to partner with you, and we have lots of ideas of ways that we can join together and really create a strength-based approach to do what's best for our students. And we really want to make sure that we get a chance to start the 18, 19-year, able to really fully educate, empower, and equip our students for that success. With that, our incoming sixth graders deserve to start the year in the best position to fully access the curriculum. In order to do that, we really need an opportunity for our Longfellow literacy specialists to screen our incoming sixth graders in the next two weeks so that we can make sure that the 71 incoming sixth graders already identified and registered at Longfellow are able to... Those students have already been identified based on their current fifth-grade assessments, and we want an opportunity for our specialists to be able to just screen them so that they can start the year ready to go and that our student and our staff know what we need. With that, you know, we believe that you all want what we want, which is just to do what's best for our students. And so we look forward to opportunities and hope that you'll facilitate making this happen as we all really strive to eliminate the achievement gap here. Lastly, I will implore you to make provision so that our teachers and staff can continue to support our students, especially Mr. Terrell Boone, who is beloved by our students and who has relationships with our students. And what we know for the folks and for young people who are up against the most tremendous obstacles, relationships matter. And so it's hard to hear talk about any other bonuses when we have, you know, kiddos who are crying and sad today that Mr. Boone wouldn't be part of our community. Thank you.
Angela Coppola, followed by Laura Babett.
Hi, my name is Angela Coppola, and I teach history at Berkeley High School. I've been a teacher for over 10 years, and seven of those years have been at Berkeley High. Personally, the sustainability crisis has hit me in the area of housing. Three years ago, I was putting more than half of my paycheck towards rent. Presently, I have a rent-controlled situation but question the long-term security of this arrangement. I love my job. I look forward to going to work every day. And I'd like to share with you an example of the joy and meaning I have, working with students as they form their own opinions and find their own interests. I received this note from a student seven months after her time with me in the classroom ended. I've never really been passionate about history. Through freshman and sophomore year, it was hard to piece together the seemingly independent events to see how they impacted today's now. All that changed when I took your class. Suddenly, it made sense. I was genuinely interested in the curriculum and could see how history snaked its way into the present. Even today, I'm still remembering Salitary neglect, Anita Hill, and Native American boarding schools. Your class is probably the most important and useful class I've ever taken. I feel like I got let in on the secret of educated American citizenship. It also came at the perfect time, the 2016 election. Without your class, I would have just been angry and defeated. But learning our history while this was being created gave me a different view. Though I was still angry, I was resilient as well, knowing that change always comes. Thank you for being a passionate and engaging teacher. I have a drawer full of notes like this. I love my job and inspiring young people to be active in the fight for a better world, but I'm losing hope that I can afford to do this important work.
Laura Babett, followed by the last speaker of the night, Montrela Wilson.
Good evening. By now, you should have all received the over 100 emails supporting the previously provided ask for Longfellow. And if by chance, some of those emails have started going to your spam box, please note that some people did add their personal note and personal testimony, so we hope that you will actually read those comments from our community. Longfellow is extremely excited about the possibility of being able to serve more students. With a .6 FTE for math support and .2 FTE in ELA, again, this would allow us to provide support at every grade level, maximizing our current staffing. The ask for the coordination of proper reading support and identification is extremely time-sensitive. This year is almost over, and everything is flying. So please hit the ground running now so that our students can hit the ground running next year. Make sure that this happens. The same is true for the funding of an early-back program for Avid Math and Literacy Strategies. As we are thinking about the pipeline to middle school and beyond with these asks, I would hope that you would also hear my support for phonics instructions to be included as a balanced part of our literacy program. In BUSD, we have a race-in-language-based education debt or achievement gap. We need to address this debt in reading with an expanded instructional program that includes phonics. Phonics and phonemic awareness are linguistic categories that help children learn to read and spell proficiently. It provides an access point for many learners that is critical for them as developing readers. BUSD's current program addresses meaning but not learning to read through understanding the letter sound and letter joinings, which makes words in an explicit systematic way. Simply put, our current program does not incorporate explicit phonics. Many, many kids need explicit phonics to learn, and this need should be considered an essential part of any reader's instruction. Studies show that students with dyslexia and/or reading challenges need phonics as a part of the everyday curriculum. Longfellow's initial ask also addressed the everyday curriculum. We hope that as you support our 2018-2019 ask, that we also continue the structural piece to really look at how we balance our school population, how we balance those needs, and how we make sure that every school is fully funded to meet the needs of its student population. Thank you so much. Again, we love our school. We thank you for partnering with us, and we look forward to making a difference in BUSD.
And the last speaker, Montrela Wilson.
Good evening, board members. First, of course, you know, I'm out here for Longfellow, and I just want to tell you, of course, we love our school, and that's the reason why I'm here. I do have a sixth grader that is at Longfellow Middle School, and I have a sophomore that graduated from... He went to elementary with Ms. Bradley and Craigmont, and my daughter went to SGC... I'm sorry. Me and Ty were in SGC together at Rosa Parks. So both of my kids are products of the Berkeley Unified School District. The success of my kids have definitely come from the support that they've received, not only at home, but also the partnership at school. I think it's just critical for us really to hear the need and the understanding that we need at Longfellow. You've heard all the statistics. You've heard all of the testimonies. Last month, my daughter got up and explained how she's in a support class that has helped to improve her math grade. I just want to tell you just a heartfelt story is that our kids won't make it if we don't take the time to make sure that the schools are resourced properly. We have teachers that are passionate, and I hear the same stories from the Berkeley High teachers that are here tonight. They love our kids. They want to do what's best for our kids. And I know it's a difficult task for you to balance the budget and figure out what's right for the kids, but we really need you to take a strong look at Longfellow and understanding that there are many areas that need to be addressed, balancing out the schools and making sure that the right resource is in the right place at the right time. Mr. Presco, I want to thank you for coming out and listening to us and hearing our concerns. And I do appreciate that you have addressed some of our issues. What we're asking tonight is that you make sure you address the immediate concerns of our school. These are building blocks onto Berkeley High and building blocks onto college. If we don't get it right now, our students will fail, and we can't afford failure. We can't afford to let our students down. I just hope and pray tonight that you will take in consideration everything you heard about Longfellow and really take it to heart and understand that there is a true need, and we really need your support to make sure that our school is funded and supported in the right way. I thank you for your time. We do thank you for your partnership, and we want to see all of our kids succeed. So I'm just hoping that you can make a difference tonight. Thank you.
All right. We got through all the public comment cards. It's the first this year, I think. So this now concludes the public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak. If you do not get a chance to speak, please remember that there is extended public comment at the end of the meeting. You can always email the board directly at boardofed@brookly.net or contact us individually. Our information is posted online at brookly.net/school-dashboard. Now, there's an opportunity to hear from our unions. Each union has five minutes to address the board on issues of its choosing. Ms. Campbell?
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Evans. I am here tonight to talk about Agenda Item 12.7, which is a resolution on the upcoming Supreme Court case known as the Janus Case, Janus versus Asme, Council 31. I want to thank Director Appel, Vice President Appel, for placing this on the agenda, and I want to urge people's support. I want to just remind anyone who may not be familiar with this case that this is a case in which the Supreme Court is very likely to decide that the responsibilities, obligations, legal requirements of unions will not change one iota, but the members will be allowed, if they so choose, to opt out of paying union dues. This will overturn 40 years of Supreme Court precedents and needs to really be seen very clearly in a context of a much larger campaign to reduce the voice of working people, to concentrate wealth in our country, and to make it harder for working people in our country to support their families, to support their community institutions. This lawsuit is being funded by the Koch Brothers, by the Walton Foundation, by many Richard Spencer, many very conservative billionaires and millionaires in our country. And that's not an accident, right? There's nothing about this... This case is reportedly about free speech. There's nothing about this that's about free speech. This is about the ability of working people to democratically and transparently form unions and then resource those unions in order to have a voice for people on the job. And this case, as you may know, I'm sure you do know, is specifically focused on the public sector. And it's important to recognize that one of the roles unions play in the public sector is they are often the voice of the client or the customer or the end receiver of services. And I think that you can see clearly here in Berkeley how a union like BFT does constantly take into mind the impact of any decision that we're part of on students and families. Unions provide a way for workers and teachers and educators to raise concerns, to improve our schools, to improve services for students. This is also true, of course, of police officers, firefighters, nurses in public hospitals, city workers. Unions play a very key role in making sure that public dollars are being spent carefully and that we're providing the very best, in this case, schools we can for our students. This is part of a larger agenda to try to privatize the public good in part by reducing or eliminating the voice of the people who provide the services. And all you have to do is look at Wisconsin, where there is a great deal of loss of wages, loss of pension security, loss of employees staying and remaining in Wisconsin to see, you know, what may happen if we become a right-to-work nation. In BFT, and I'm sure my sister and brother unions here in BUSD, we're very committed. We've been talking to our members constantly, and we've talked to almost every single member in our union, which is about almost 1,000 people, about this, and we think people are aware, and we think people are going to stick with the union. But resolutions like this one help to bring greater awareness to this situation and to reaffirm something that this board has held for a long time, which is a support of unions, a support of the partnership with unions, the support of working with the democratically-elected representatives of the workers in your institution to make things better for everyone, including the students and families we serve. And so I appreciate this resolution and hope that you will pass it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other union representatives? District committees?
Thank you. I'm not that young, but I'm a visual person, so I sent you an email with an image. I know that they're not... I know that they're not allowed to be projected now. Policy and protocol changed, so I sent it to you by email, and I think at least two, right? So, good evening, Superintendent Evans, School Board Directors. I'm Maracolezas, President of the Berkeley PTA Council, and I'm here to support Longfellow's four requests. I blush. You have just heard about these four asks in detail and received over 100 letters from the extended community, so I will not delve into details about them. Instead, I want to highlight three things. One, these requests show how in tune Longfellow, PTA, and community is with its own community, how committed to each and every student, and how much Longfellow has learned from experience. Two, these requests are about pro-action and coordination, and as such, as efficient as can be. Also, they are based on the principle that well-placed and timely interventions are the most effective ways of maximizing opportunities for students who need support to reach their full potential. Three, and this is where the picture comes in, and I ask you please to look at it, these requests are about equity. If you look at the image in the email, do you have it? Good. That is, I apologize to the audience, but I can just pass around my iPhone. That's what equity looks like. It is providing different support to make it possible for each of these different three people to be able to watch the soccer match. And this is very important because the World Cup is coming. It's just around the corner. Imagine they come, we are unprepared, and by the time we gave the right boxes for each of them, they missed part of the match, or maybe missed goals, or maybe the whole thing. We know the fence is there. We should do something before the match starts. We don't want to miss the goals. That's the urgent. We still have the important. We need to remove the systemic inequities, that is, remove the fence. But that's for another speech. I know all of us, the PTA Council, the district, and the board have the same goals, and as our public representatives, we depend on you to secure those goals, both urgent and important. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My daughter is a sophomore at Berkeley High School.
Did you say what committee you're representing?
Sure. I'm representing, I am a member of the Facilities Safety and Maintenance Oversight Committee, and I am a PhD in environmental engineering. This is my statement at the last facilities maintenance meeting that was on May 6th, May 4th, excuse me. The Facilities Maintenance and Oversight Committee strongly recommends development of BUSD's sustainability plan. Additionally, we recommend that BUSD create a sustainability specialist position to enable its implementation with teachers, students, staff, and management. Secondly, the Facilities Safety, Maintenance, and Oversight Committee recommends that a Measure H spending be publicly posted and made electronically accessible on BUSD's website, showing all detailed Measure H income and expenditure dollars for review by the public. The Facilities Safety and Maintenance Oversight Committee recommends that proposed Measure H user-friendly information be used as background information to all FSMOC meetings and reports. I bring these two items to you because it's very difficult on an oversight committee for spending of Measure H to review those monies spent and received without being able to see them. We, public records requests can be made, but it really should, these are taxpayer dollars, and it should be made clear to the public as well as members to be able to understand the oversight. So that's my main input. I also would like to bring to your attention that recently a email exchange occurred when I asked for the meeting minutes and handing, meeting handouts be sent via email back to me because another member of the public requested them so that I could forward them. The reply I got from staff, BUSD staff, was, unfortunately, the annual plan and minutes from the 5/8 meeting will not be able to be distributed outside of the committee. These are public documents. The meetings were all public. It needs to be clarified to all staff that there are no private, mysterious, or, documents need to be shared, and I was just appalled. So anyways, thank you very much.
Board member comments. Director Hempill.
First of all, I want to thank the Longfellow community for coming out tonight, and I am sorry that I have read most of the emails, but I have been away for the past three weeks, visiting family, and also my youngest son and last child graduated from college, so we were at his college graduation. And then we visited family on the East Coast. So I saw some of it, but I can't say that I was religiously reading my emails, but I certainly heard what you had to say. Both my sons went to Longfellow, and I know a lot of the history of Longfellow, how it happened to become a magnet, some of the promises that previous board members, boards made that have not come to pass. And also that I hear what you're saying about more resources, and I agree. I also am hoping that you, as a community, are looking at other things other than just additional budget. I know, for example, when my sons were at Longfellow, there was a required reading period, reading class for all sixth graders, and there was double-period math for students that needed additional help. These are not necessarily budget things, but they're programmatic things. And so I'm hoping that the Longfellow community, in conjunction with the principal and central admin, may look at some programmatical things that also could improve and not just more resources, though I agree with you that it's warranted, as well as looking at whether or not the initial conception of Longfellow was a magnet. If it's going to be a magnet, there needs to be some changes made. I want to announce that tomorrow there will be a graduation ceremony for our bridge students at Berkeley High. These are students who've overcome, in many cases, significant challenges to get to graduation. It is a wondrous occasion, and it is amazing because the last time it was the opening finals game of basketball championship. There were 26 seniors, and every single one came on the first night of the finals of Warriors in Cleveland. I had to make myself go. So I was like, nope, kids are going, you got to go too. So I don't know who was probably looking on their phones, but I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. June 2nd is Black graduation, and that's also a very joyous occasion. And lastly, I just want to say that my last office hours of the school year will be June 9th at 10:30. It's a Saturday at Cafe Leela. If you do need to talk to me outside of the office hours, the best thing to do is to email me at karenhempell@berkeley.net, and we can set up another time. My next office hours are probably not going to be till September because every time I've had August office hours, I've just sat there by myself. So anyway, that's it.
Thanks, Karen. You want to go next? Okay, Superintendent Evans?
Good evening, and thank you, Longfellow, for coming out. We've definitely been listening to and examining the issues brought up by the Longfellow community. We acknowledge that there are some big questions that we need to deal with moving forward that include some long-term considerations about the school assignment process at middle school, particularly as it relates to Longfellow. As for now, we are responding to the expressed needs with some short-term steps to support the school. So we're looking at, through LCAP, we're proposing to increase the RTI intervention staffing, which would take that position from 60% to a full-time position. We are proposing a slight increase in the ELD support position through LCAP for 1819. We're planning to fund an additional 60% teaching position for the 1819 school year to support team teaching in three math classrooms for 1819 school year. We are also planning to assign one of the two proposed student welfare and attendance positions in LCAP exclusively to Longfellow for the 1819 school year to provide general support to a cohort of 30 to 35 students. We are exploring the funding of an early back pre-teaching program for this summer, and Dr. Sadler's office is working on funding for that. We also want to support the pre-test of fifth graders coming into Longfellow. With strong supports or efforts over the last few years in both high school redesign and currently with new proposals to add an explicit phonics component to our early elementary school curriculum, the Longfellow concerns and questions are remainder, or, I'm sorry, a reminder that the resourcing and needs of all of our middle school students, or all of our middle schools is an area that likely deserves greater focus and attention for 1819.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Okay, I'm going to move on to Director Alper. Alper, Director Alper is passing. Director Leva Cutler?
Thank you, Superintendent. I appreciate those, mention of how Longfellow will be supported, and I appreciate the time that parents have taken to come together, and I know it's been a lot of meetings that you've had, and I welcome that because you welcome your students, all of your students. So I hope that this communication can go out to all the families of Longfellow because this is important news. So thank you very much, Superintendent, and the staff for that. I also wanted to talk about, it's on information, information items, and it's about our undocumented student policy. The policy outlines how information will be gathered, handled, and shared, or not, and the role of districts in limiting immigration enforcement in our public schools. And that outlaws, that outlaws the discrimination of students based on their immigration status or that of their parents or guardians. Students and their parents and guardians should always feel safe in our schools and the ability to, and our ability to provide free and equal access to public education regardless of our student's status. We all know that we have a serious problem here in the United States. We have many students right now, we're 1,500 undocumented students that are not, don't know where they are. So for us to create a policy, and I hope the board will read this over, this will come again in terms of a consent item, and I hope that we can pass this because this is an important place that we find ourselves in history, and it's important the school districts all around protect all of our students. Also, I am very excited about the sustainability plan that our district can have and will have, and the policies that we will provide and hopefully within the policy committee create to support green building, to also supplies, also the echo literacy. I'm excited about all that because I think I've, we've seen some of that, how, when students have the information, how powerful they can be, and so we're hoping also to launch something, I'll tell you more later, with our students as a contest. So I'm excited about that, and my office hours will be June 4th. It'll be my last for the school year, but always you can email and/or contact me at Casa Latina from 4:30 to 6 o'clock. That's Monday, June 4th.
Director Nagerajan Swenson? Say it for me one more time. I should know by now.
Nagerajan Swenson.
Nagerajan Swenson. No, you don't have any comments? Okay. Yes, I do. So, hi. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for staying. It's always so nice when people stay for our comments. And I, there's a couple things I wanted to say. First of all, I wanted to commend the work of the Sustainability Group, and Susan Silver left, but I do want to just echo the support for that work. I think that both the curriculum and the facilities components of that are really important to the sustainability, not just of our district, but also teaching our students to incorporate acts of sustainability and protecting our planet into their everyday lives. So I'm very excited about that. But I wanted to focus most of my comments on, on the, well, I will say that President Campbell kind of took the words out of my mouth, but I wanted to focus on the resolution that we have in front of us to support the public sector unions in the face of what could be, which is a very, very heavy blow on public sector organizing. And the reason why I think this is important isn't just because of all the reasons that Kathy Campbell mentioned, that we need to protect our right to, the right to organize, and I'm going to read some of the, some of the resolution to you, but also because it's really important for our young people, for our children who are just preparing to launch into their lives, to recognize the importance of collective, of collective action and collective community and in unions in protecting their rights, and the fact that it's much more effective to work as a, as a group than as an individual. And so for me, our unions are really the backbone of our democracy, and I'm very concerned about this attempt by the most wealthy to undermine what is really the strongest voice of the working class. So I just wanted to read some parts, pieces of this. First of all, it says, whereas all families should have the means to thrive in safe and healthy communities, and whereas the working people who make our school district run deserve good jobs that can support families, and whereas being able to come together in unions gives people, particularly women and people of color, a powerful voice in speaking up for themselves, their families, and their communities, and ensures they are treated with dignity and respect at work. And whereas, when people stick together in unions, they gain the power and numbers to raise wages and improve benefits like healthcare for themselves, their families, and all our communities. And whereas, when people can negotiate together for strong contracts, I'm leaving some out, you can read the whole thing, higher wages and safe, dignified working conditions, all of us benefit. Our communities are stronger, our schools are safer and more supported, and our entire economy is made more fair. And whereas, the United States Supreme Court is considering the case of Janus versus Asme, Council 31, which could restrict unions from requiring fees from non-employee member, member employees who benefit from collective bargaining, thereby weakening the union's power to effectively negotiate on behalf, I'm sorry, I'm going to take a little bit more time, on behalf of all of our public sector workers, such as nurses, teachers, and firefighters. And whereas, an unfavorable decision by the United States Supreme Court may deny public sector workers the freedom to access strong unions and make our communities and schools safe, more equitable, and strong, now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley Unified School District supports the freedom of all employees to exercise their rights to a voice and dignity on the job through joining together in strong unions. And be it therefore resolved that the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Directors urges the superintendent and the Human Resources Department to continue to work with the public sector unions in BUSD to ensure their health and access and to mitigate negative impacts post Janus versus Asme, Council 31 Supreme Court case decision, assuming it goes the wrong way, be it finally resolved that the Berkeley Unified School District affirms the commitment of the district to supporting public sector workers whose rights and freedoms are threatened as the Supreme Court considers Janus versus Asme and recognizes the important role unions play in strong schools. Thank you. And as a final note, I just want to say to check out the op-ed page of the San Francisco Chronicle today, because I wrote a joint op-ed with members of my neighbor school boards, and I think you'll like it.
I'm president. Not that you have a choice.
I didn't. Don't think of any comments. Okay, so we will be moving on. Let me pull up my agenda here. Is that yours or mine? Well, where am I with it? All right, we did close session, call order, not close session, should we open session? Consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Director Leva Cutler, is there a second? Second by Director Alper. No objection. Consent calendar is approved. Okay, item number 13, discussion update on special education. We've allotted 40 minutes for, for the discussion, so let's try to stick to that. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, as President Daniel stated earlier, this has been a priority for the board as well as the district for this year. And so throughout this year, we've had several meetings to address some of the issues that we are experiencing in special ed, in our special education department. And so tonight, our associate superintendent, Skidery, will really address some of the updates and progress that we've made in some key areas. And one is the development and the composition of the special ed committee as well as some of the negotiations that we've done in terms of trying to improve our cost, our fees that we've been charged and also looking at some of the professional development that we're looking at providing for our staff. So here are some of the, these are some of the areas that we've been looking into. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our director, Skidery, to update us on special education.
Alrighty. I want to say that Lisa Graham, our outgoing director, couldn't be here tonight, but I want to thank her for her contributions to this report and since we welcomed our incoming director last week, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Director Lisa Graham for her, I believe, eight years of service to Berkeley Unified. She and her wife are moving to Colorado where she's going to accept an early childhood position with Douglas County School District. I really want to thank Lisa for her service. She's been a great partner in special ed over the last couple of years. We're going to cover a lot of ground in hopefully a very short period of time, so I can go back to slides if folks need them. We've structured the presentation to kind of give you some continuity from what we first reported to you in March, post-December of 2017 report. And we also tried to structure it in a way that we end with some good news and some promising possibilities that lay on the horizon. Last time we talked to you, we wanted to make sure that we contextualized the discussion about special ed, particularly special ed costs, with the growing disparity between the expenditures that we're having to make and how that has outpaced funding over the last several years statewide. When we talked to you last, we talked about the areas that we were focusing on while in transition with the leadership in special education and we'll give brief updates on those areas tonight. When we talked to you last time, one of the key elements of the report was really to clarify and revise and review our policies and procedures. So that in the area of procedural guidelines, we mentioned last time that the five-member districts of our Special Education Local Planning Agency, Albany, Alameda, ourselves, Emory and Piedmont, were collectively revising a procedural manual together. The first one-third of that report has been approved, revised, reviewed and approved by the superintendents and Dr. Evans and his partner superintendents should be approving the final revisions of that document in, between June and August. So we should have this revised procedural manual by the beginning of the 1819 school year. The critical element for, for this, if you really look at our report, is to make sure that we own those procedural guidelines as ours, not just kind of an abstract reference tool that comes from SLPA and really use our committees, use our principals meeting, use our staff development time to familiarize our district and our community and our parents with our policies and procedures. We think this is a really good start and the first 32 pages read, read very clearly. We talked about reviewing extended school year costs for potential cost savings there. We did have a slight cost increase in the extended school year costs for special education between the summer of 16 and the summer of 17. We dug deeper into that since the March meeting and realized that the, the increase was $22,000 and what we're still trying to determine was how much of that cost was a result of expanding to three sites or were just changes in the needs of students who needed to be served over the summer. So it's not a comparatively large amount given to what we're trying to contain cost-wise, but we are still working on that. One of the things that we've talked a lot about since March is the need to align critical staff time with the board's priority of special education. And I think that in order to get clearer on how we do special education in general, to build clearer connectivity between district staff, site staff, parent communities, is that we need to dedicate more critical staff time to this topic. So for instance, at our principals meeting, if you look at the recommendations in section 13 of our December report, there's a lot of clarification and refining and support that we need to do for our principals in terms of what their role in the special education process is. That's going to mean us finding time at those weekly principals meetings, perhaps one every month, one of the four meetings. And I'm still in discussions, negotiations with my partner Maggie Riddle on that, but that's a place that we're going to really have to look at dedicating significant staff time to clarifying roles and responsibilities. Similarly, our Ed Services team, our, our team of directors meets weekly. We have two two-hour meetings a month and one one-hour meeting a month. We're talking about taking at least one and potentially two of those meetings and really having those just be kind of an executive focused session between myself, the new executive director of special education and our director of K8 schools. A big challenge for us is deeper and more profound integration of special education and general education. And so again, we need to direct more executive time to strategizing how we'll work with sites and staff on that. We talked last time about reviewing potential areas where we could increase Medi-Cal billing. That's been a challenge to find places where we might increase funds or contain costs in that area. If a service is being provided to a student or a family, in order to be billable, the family must consent, the family must be eligible. In many cases, a physician has to determine that the service we're providing is medically necessary and then the medical eligibility needs to be confirmed by the San Joaquin County Office of Education, who's our third-party provider for making determinations around eligibility. In a community that is gentrifying in terms of median income, housing costs, we are finding fewer families that are eligible for Medi-Cal. However, there are still areas that we are looking at to potentially increase some of that reimbursement. We've looked at transportation quite a bit and our current analysis is that the staffing and the coordination that would be required to collect reimbursements on the limited number of special education transportation-related costs would not really yield an overall savings. Medi-Cal has recently indicated that they are going to change to allow reimbursements for occupational therapy services. So this is an area that we do have an opportunity to look at. Again, that reimbursement is dependent on the same set of criteria that we talked about on the previous slide and their change in how they're allowing people to be reimbursed on that is worth us exploring further. Professional learning challenges related to special education, this is something we talked about extensively in Educational Services Team meeting yesterday. And really, when you talk to a lot of our, our special ed staff, teachers, principals, Ed Services staff, that longstanding need to develop further as an inclusion district really means we need to figure out ways, I guess the simplest way to say it is how we put it here, to try to find special education PD for our general education staff. How do we get tier-two and differentiation strategies for general ed teachers who are serving special ed students in the classroom out there so that kids can access the curriculum and meet accommodations? Now, a major challenge with professional learning here and professional learning in general is it's worth a reset that we don't have an expansive amount of professional development time relative to the huge number of areas that we want to build staff capacity in. We have three district full days. We yield one of those back to sites to do their kind of localized PD work and team building. We have five Wednesdays that we direct as the district. Two of those are dedicated to scoring, ELA scoring. One, we spend on social emotional topics, toolbox, some of our welcoming schools curriculum, et cetera, and then two that are sometimes open or dedicated to math scoring. We can direct principals to kind of collaborate with their leadership teams to, you know, use some of the, the remainder of the Wednesday afternoons to, towards specific PD. But I think a big discussion about increasing PD time in general, or at least the time that we can direct, is something we need to explore given this subject, subject in a lot of areas where we want to increase capacity. Another big area in the report, the development of the advisory committee as was recommended in the report. Again, I want to really underline developing. We have a new executive director coming on. Certainly want to get Dr. Hamilton's take on how to approach this, given her experience with similar teams in the past. Thus far, in special ed and in talking with Director Graham and our program manager over at the high school, Susanna Bell, we really think that in order to get kind of really productive meetings, that what we might want is a K8 advisory committee and a BHS advisory committee, given the fact that there are just some distinct differences in the service needs. And again, it provides us an opportunity to have more parents involved in this process. Very much initially, this is the graphic composition of what we're considering, that it would be five parents, a K5 principal, a middle school principal, our executive director, at least one of our program supervisors, a counselor, a general ed counselor, teachers representing the mild, moderate and moderate, severe staff, as well as an instructional assistant and either a SLPA or external service provider partner. So again, these are just developing ideas, but between BHS and K8, this is kind of an early composition and those are some of kind of the, the, the general bullet points at the table, if you will. Supposed to be people sitting around the table, probably not the most artful graphic, but one that Google Slides made available. Another thing that we'd really like to do in the spirit of community input is raise awareness around the fact that our Special Education Local Planning Agency has a, a community advisory committee. And I know it's a big ask and the SLPA does a good job of trying to kind of centrally locate this so that parents from all five partners in the SLPA can access it. I think in previous years, they've scheduled it in Emeryville because that's kind of a midpoint or accessible to all of the, the five partnering SLPAs. So, you know, in, in talking with Dr. Hamilton and with Director Graham, we certainly want to make our priority our local advisory committee, but out of that committee, we're hoping that if we have some parents who would be willing to connect to the SLPA advisory committee, that would also be kind of a beneficial way to plug into what's happening in the region in terms of special ed. And given that so many districts are facing the same challenges we are in terms of costs, there may be some informational benefit to it. When we were here last, we talked about reviewing non-public agency costs. Non-public agencies generally provide us, as you know, speech and language, pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, the kind of specialized staffing that we need to support students. The Bay Area Collaborative that we belong to includes SLPA directors from 10 SLPAs across the state and they essentially collectively bargain annual rates. So we couldn't kind of go out and just do a traditional, open-ended request for proposals, but what we have been doing is working within that collaborative with the service providers and looking to see if we could negotiate better rates because many of them run a range. When you look at the, the options that you have in the, the agencies that provide these services, you genuinely run into three different categories. A local agency, something called a traveler agency or a non-local agency, which is, I guess the best way to describe it is someone that could be located out of state but provides like, has a network of people out there that provide this service. Those agencies can't always provide the volume of staffing we need and like the individual providers, which is the third option, they often are, do not provide the equipment that's necessary to run assessments, to maintain that equipment in say the speech and language pathology realm. So we, you know, we have to be really careful when we're looking at just improving our hourly costs, that we're also considering, you know, equipment, maintenance of equipment, the supervision of staff that we're contracting out to. But the good news is, is in working with two of our biggest providers and really want to appreciate them because, you know, a lot of people are looking to have their costs come down. We have a commitment from Speech Pathology Group to extend a 7% discount to us for the coming contract year, which we think will net a savings or a projected savings of about $104,000. BrightPath, who provides the lion's share of our physical therapy and occupational therapy costs, has agreed to bring their physical therapy costs in line with their OT costs, which means a reduction from $93 an hour to $76 an hour. This was an agreement we literally came to, I think the day we were going to press with this board agenda. So we're still calculating that projected costs out, but that's a very good sign early on in our, in our efforts to kind of contain costs for the, from those providers. Non-public school placements, we're still really examining this. I just wanted to throw this up to give people an idea of those costs and how many kids we have in non-public placements. We review this annually, special ed actually reviews this weekly. And what we've attempted to do here is show you on the bottom line, the number of students that, that are served by an individual non-public school. We didn't want to put the schools or anything else that might kind of compromise privacy. And then the, the dollar amounts that, that go into the roughly $2.6 million that we're spending a year on non-public placements. I should point out that the 25 students that you see in that second and tallest bar graph represents our transition program. Those are students who we still support between the ages of 18 and 22 and are served by a, a local agency that specializes in that program support. We talked about hiring last time and I'll just reiterate, we're very pleased to have Dr. Jan Hamilton from Salina City Unified, who'll be joining us on July 9th. We talked about statewide concerns for funding. This is just another way of looking at that graphic we looked at upfront, which is, you know, that the, the costs that we are assuming as districts over the past 10 years has grown exponentially. The good news is that there is a bill in the assembly that they're trying to get out of the gate in time to have an impact for the 1819 school year. Talked to our SLPA director this week and what they're asking is 200 million of the long-term proposed 1.3 billion for this bill, which will support special education costs, rising costs in particular areas. If that 200 million, which they're asking to get the bill started, was to get out of the gate, our share could be about $270,000. So I think when you look at that, in addition to the potential savings we've already outlined from renegotiating costs with our NPAs, it's a, it's a, you know, a modest but important start to us trying to offset some of our special education costs.
All right. Well done, sir. All right, I'm going to take a page out of Director Nagerajan Swenson's playbook, presidential playbook, and go down the row. One question, one comment. We'll just keep going around until no one asks questions or comments or we ran out of time. So you can make a question and response or you can make a comment, but not both. Who would like to start? Director Hemphill?
So I have a question in terms of, have we done or, or looking to do particularly a, I would say a sampling of IEPs from like, say to look at appropriateness as well as bias, for example? Because I do think that there is a difference in some students, or obviously I would say that, like who's in a non-public placement versus who's not, versus who's being assigned to our counseling enriched program, which of course there's a monetary differences and potentially also a program quality difference, as well as just kind of getting a chuck to see through a sampling if, if it's felt that IEPs are appropriate as opposed to sometimes starting at the top as a, which then you never come down, but looking at a more appropriate response. And so I would just, I don't know what the answer is, but I would think I'm interested in hearing about the possibility of doing some kind of sampling.
Okay. You are a, an incredible leader about how to do this, Director Hemphill. I'm going, got to start somewhere. I, I am going to make a comment on your last slide, taking it in reverse, that as much as I would love to see a B3136 or an equivalent as I would love to see a B3136 or an equivalent bill passed through the legislature, I would say that while it's exciting to contemplate the possibilities, we should not bank on it for next year. Vice President Nappel. Going down the line. All right. Director Nogarajan Swenson. Director Leva Cutler.